Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee Meeting of April 24th, 2019. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting on May 8th. It will also be available for viewing on SMC's website. The first item on our agenda tonight is public participation. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee and is at the top of our agenda at each regular meeting. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in addressing the committee. Those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting, and you will be recognized for up to three minutes. The next item on the agenda is chairpersons and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Mrs. Gonzano?
Um, I just wanted to inform the committee and the community about the MOVE luncheon that Dr. McGee and I and other members at the table attended at the Marriott Courtyard. This is the luncheon that honors students who participate in the MOVE program. They work in the kitchen and learn valuable job skills and hospitality. It was delicious lunch. They made it themselves and served it to us. They're always delightful. And as always, it was inspiring. They had students speak, and they honored the seniors who are graduating. So I'd like to extend congratulations to them and their families, and to the program itself, which is really awesome.
Excellent. Thank you. Colleagues, anything further on the members' reports? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. I'll underscore Ms. Gonzano's report. It's always one of our favorite events of the year, and it was extremely well done again today, and that program continues to thrive. And it's a great example of ways to get students outside of the walls of Shrewsbury High School and to gain some real-world skills. And I'm sure we'll be looking as we move, try to do more of that in the future. That's a great example for us to follow. So congratulations to everyone involved with the MOVE program. I also wanted to commend the Shrewsbury High School Unified Club. The Unified Group has been doing a lot over the past few years. We started a unified track team, unified basketball program, and most recently, the club had a campaign, part of the national campaign known as Spread the Word to End the Word, which is the idea to end the use of the quote-unquote "our" word as a derogative term. They organized signing several banners to pledge to spread the word to end the word at lunchtime, but they also, under the direction of Theodore Chacharoni and Cole Alkerman, who are two students at the high school, they're part of the Unified Club. Many of the Unified athletes took part in a video that they've posted on social media. We'll have that posted on our website shortly. Ask students to think about what word they would want to be known as instead of a term such as that. I thought it was extremely well done, and another great concrete example of how we're really working to ensure that we have the most inclusive environment as possible in our schools. And so congratulations to the Unified Club, and check out our website over the next couple of days, and we'll have that video posted for the public to see. And other than that, we are hitting our most busy stretch of the year with events. So we have, this is concert week at Shrewsbury High School. I don't see any concert last night. There's one this evening, and again tomorrow night. Spring athletics are in full bloom, and we are starting the march towards all of the end-of-year senior events as the class of 2019 moves towards graduation. So it's a particularly busy time, but lots to celebrate. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is under the heading of policy. It is an update to the physical restraint policy, a second reading and a proposed vote. By way of background, a first reading of the proposed update to policy 325, Prevention of Physical Restraint and Requirements If Used, was held at the school committee meeting on March 27th of this year. It was noted at the time that the policy was being updated to reflect language changes or additions required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and that further changes required by DESI needed to be made to the updated draft policy. Changes presented at the first reading are in red font in our meeting materials, committee members, and subsequent changes are noted in blue font. Dr. Sawyer, is there anything you'd like to add, or would you like to expand on this a little bit?
Just to emphasize that these are essentially technical updates to each of these policies. We have many procedures in place around both of these issues that we follow. These are both regulated heavily by the state, and as a result, we recently had a visit from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's tiered focus monitoring team that they've changed their auditing process essentially. Instead of one big visit every six years or so, there's more ongoing, smaller visits over the course of time where they check on a variety of issues. They can review these policies, and they ask that some additional language be included, just to make sure that the policies hit all the things that is expected based on the law and regulations at the state level. So the language that you do see in the red as well as the blue reflects that. And there are two areas that are very important for the safety and well-being of our students. And regardless of the sort of technical aspects of these things, you know, it's incumbent upon the school district to make sure, which we achieve every year through annual compliance training that we have staff go through, more intensive training where that's warranted relative to if, in the small number of instances, we do need to use physical restraint with the students, that it's done properly and safely. And then also, of course, in terms of bullying, while there's a sort of a technicality that bullying means repetitive behaviors, anytime there's a behavior that is reported that's of concern relative to students not treating one another appropriately, that's something that we take seriously, investigate, and take the kind of action we believe is appropriate in order to rectify the situation. We want to continue to focus on making our school climates and cultures as positive and as safe as possible. And these are policy frameworks that are specific, but in a broader sense, these are areas that we have to continue to focus our time and energy. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions about the specifics. Ms. Balsito's also here this evening. She worked with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education team on the language, and we ask that you approve it tonight so we can become aligned with where the state wants us to be.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And before we move into the committee for discussion, I am not aware of any public feedback received on the proposed policy, committee members. Has anyone received any feedback? Dr. Sawyer, was there any feedback from the public? With that, is there any discussion from the committee? Questions for Dr. Sawyer? Discussion? With that, I would entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve the updated policy 325, Prevention of Physical Restraint and Requirements If Used, as presented.
So moved. Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is also under policy and along a similar vein. This is a second reading of the update to our bullying policy, as with the previous item. A first reading of the proposed update to policy 712, Bullying Prevention and Intervention, was held at the committee meeting on March 27th. And as, again, with our previous item, it was noted at the time that the policy was being updated to reflect language changes or additions required by DESI. Dr. Sawyer, anything further on this item?
No, just what I said earlier.
Excellent. Again, as with the previous item, unaware of any feedback that was received, committee members will open it up for discussion or questions. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion at this time that the committee vote to approve the updated policy 712, Bullying Prevention and Intervention, as presented.
So moved. Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is a presentation and vote on our fiscal year 2020 School Department Appropriated Budget Recommendation. By way of background, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins presented the superintendent's initial recommendation for the fiscal year 2020 School Department Budget at the committee meeting on February 13th, which included a status quo budget that carries the existing program forward, and separately presented additional needs due to mandated services as well as recommended strategic investments that are aligned with the district's strategic priorities. Based on an updated budget projection from the town manager, updated cost projection from Mr. Collins, and new grant funding that will be available, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will provide us this evening with an updated recommendation for a budget of town appropriated dollars. It's Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins.
Thank you. We're pleased to present this this evening. As the title page says, this is regarding the School Department Fiscal Year 2020 Town Appropriated Budget Final Recommendation to the School Committee that will ask you to vote upon to make your recommendation to town meeting this evening. Of course, there are other funding sources that the School Department uses for its operation, whether those are income from fees and tuitions, whether those are grants from the federal and state level, other sources relative to beyond the School Department appropriation. This is the single largest source, of course, and it's a combination of funding that comes from local property tax and other tax revenues locally, as well as the state Chapter 70 allocation that we receive from the state. While we'll refer to some of the other sources in the context of this season's presentation, again, this is regarding the recommendation to town meeting for the appropriation they have authority over. And for those who aren't as familiar with the budgeting process for school districts within Massachusetts and a municipal district like ours, the town meeting has authority over the bottom-line School Department budget. The school committee has the authority regarding the actual line items themselves, and you do have the proposed line item budget that we'd ask you to approve this evening. And assuming town meeting approves, then that would go forward as the allocations for those various line items for the next fiscal year. So with that, the recommendation for the appropriated budget is for $66,302,041. That represents a $2,164,434 increase over the current fiscal year, which represents 3.37% on that appropriation. So that's the amount of dollars that would be increased year over year. I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins. He can talk a little about the status of where we're at and where we derived this recommendation, and then I'll talk a little bit about what's encompassed within that budget.
So first, I just, excuse me, want to bring us back, a little bit back in time with respect to the beginning of the budget process and the initial recommendation back in February for so-called status quo budget, just over $67 million and a $2.94 million increase, or just about 4.6%. And that's where we were back in February. The town manager shortly after issued his initial budget recommendation for both municipal departments and the School Department, and his was for the School Department, $66.2 million, or a three-point, almost 3.3% increase. So we had a fairly significant gap back at that time. And then, as a result of the state budgeting process, and the most recent issuance of the House Ways and Means Committee budget in April, the town manager increased his recommendation for a School Department budget by $51,625. So his new recommendation is the $66.3 million, or 3.37%. And those are the same figures that Dr. Sawyer just mentioned as his recommendation. And so the gap from the status quo to the final recommendation, and I should just pause for a second. The net change in the town manager's recommendation was a result of increased state aid that the House Ways and Means Committee budgeted for an additional $10 per student in the Chapter 78 bucket of money. But there were also some additional charges for charter schools. So that $51,625 is a net difference on the school aid, state school aid, and he effectively just increased his recommendation by that amount. So the difference between the status quo, which was basically carrying all of our programs and staff forward, and the town manager's final recommendation was just about $779,000. And actually, I'm just going to go to the slide next, put back. This gap closing measures, in March, the school committee kind of advancing in the budgeting process, we talked about some options to increase fees and what that might do to additional revenue from alternative sources increasing here so that we could correspondingly decrease the recommendation on the town appropriation. And so the committee voted to increase the busing in athletic and preschool fees. Those in sum amounted to just over $46,000. And the difference, the $732,000 is basically what we're planning to do and recommending is that we carry forward current year surplus into next year via the Circuit Breaker Fund. So that's how we were able to keep all of the existing staffing and programs as proposed in the status quo budget. So the recommendation of $66.3 million, the $2.1 million increase over the current year, in context, you can see the four prior years, the percentage increases all on the twos and threes. And so this recommendation for the upcoming year at 3.37 just happens to put the three-year average at exactly 3.0%. So again, since the override year, there have been just modest, usual, what you would expect to be customary types of increases in the annual appropriation.
So with that, we'll start talking a little bit about resources that are included beyond the status quo budget that we have in place this year. First off, we separated this out to signal that because of the additional Chapter 78, and of course, we're very appreciative that in the House, we have an excellent advocate in Representative Kane, and she did sign on for advocating for increases to the minimum aid per student, which is what we get based on the Chapter 70 formula. It did increase by $10 per student. It netted out after a little higher charge for charter school estimate to be a little over $50,000. That enables us to add something that we wanted to add beyond the status quo, which is 0.6 full-time equivalent adjustment counselor at Sherwood Middle School. We currently have 2.4 budgeted FTE there. A year ago, you may recall that we added, we had the same scenario at Oak Middle School, and we added a .6 to go to 3.0 full-time adjustment counselors. That was very beneficial. We see the need, and this will be something that we will do that we benefit from as a result of that additional Chapter 78. In addition, you recall from my last update that there were several resources that I was recommending beyond the status quo budget based on our ability to finance these. The first four were in the category we had presented even back when we presented the first budget in February as what we're calling Other Necessary Priorities. These are either because of mandated services or other absolute needs just for functioning for the district. That includes a .7 additional FTE for nursing staff at the high school. That position actually already exists. It's just funded through a different mechanism, and we need to assume it within the budget. An additional special education teacher at Shrewsbury High School, based on enrollment and additional IEP services that are required there next year. An ELC coordinator, those are the teaching professionals who oversee programming for students with significant special needs typically on the autism spectrum. That position is most needed at the preschool level, so that'll be added to Parker Road Preschool. And then, as you know, from the recommendations made from the UMass Collins Center report, we're looking to do some reorganization and staffing adjustments to add capacity to run our district administration. This would allow for one position or $50,000 towards a position that we could add to start addressing those needs. In addition to that, we have positions that are connected to the various strategic priorities that the school committee has charged us with. The first listed there is under the Enhanced Well-Being of All. You'll see that it notes two elementary, either adjustment counselors and/or clinical coordinator positions, just to support student mental and behavioral health needs. The last time you saw our recommendation was for three positions. We are still advocating for three positions, but another good news story is that we received a mental health grant that Ms. Balsito and the Assistant Director of Special Education, Megan Bartlett, wrote that will fund one of those positions for next year. So we only have to put two of them through the appropriated budget portion of the budget. And those are much needed, and we are very excited about the prospect of bringing those online. In addition to that, a science teacher, this is under Space and Resources category, again, growing enrollment at the high school. This will actually add, net add, half an FTE to both the science and the math departments. We have a math teacher who teaches actually both math and science who's retiring, and we will essentially add an FTE to the budget so we can hire a full science teacher and a full math teacher in replacing that half-and-half position that's currently there. We will be able to add the equivalent of two full-time equivalent positions. That will probably be fractions across different departments, but will enable us to eliminate shared staff between the middle and the high school. This will go towards being able to operate those schedules independently, which gives us a lot more flexibility about how we run courses, how we staff and schedule lunches, for example. So with enrollment still high at the middle schools and high and growing at the high school, that's a very important measure for us to be able to be more innovative in the way we approach scheduling. Additionally, we are adding a high school school counselor, what in the past was commonly known as a guidance counselor. Again, very much related to the fact that we have increasing student enrollment at the high school. Want to make sure that those ratios of counselor to student stay at a reasonable level. It also will help us with the program that we came online this past year, having students with more work-study opportunities outside of the school, which is really, should be run through that counseling, school counselor department. It also will enable us, and these are some additional positions that were below the line the last time we presented, that based on where we're at financially, we believe should be added and will be able to be added in next year's budget. And that is an adjustment counselor at the high school to address, again, mental and behavioral and social, emotional health needs. That position, under that idea, will be adding to the elementary, middle school, and high school level in terms of counseling support. And that's something that we're pleased that we'll be able to do. And then the last few pieces, a software package that will act as a dashboard or tracking tool. One of our strategic priority areas is to look at how do we make sure that students who are identified as at-risk learners for a variety of reasons. And there are powerful software programs now that can help identify, you know, students based on different statistics, based on different survey data, a whole variety of issues, to be able to track progress over time and do a better job of making sure, to the best of our ability, that no one's slipping through the cracks who has educational needs. And then we are adapting, as you know, a new science curriculum based on changes in the state standards. This will enable us to add some more materials towards the science program and curriculum materials. And all this essentially is possible compared to the last time that we presented to you, because we did have news that the number of students who were accepted and therefore are expected to enroll at Assabett Vocational Technical High School was lower than what we were projecting. And so we're able to make a shift of a little more than $250,000 in the budget allocation away from that that will help us, within the context of the numbers we're working with, fund these various things towards enhancing our program next year. Again, we'll leverage that, much of it, through the positive variance that we have in place this year, that we can move through the Circuit Breaker Fund, as well as having to spend less on vocational technical high school tuitions next year. So that's the equivalent of 10.7 FTE, all of which we think are very, more than justified and sorely needed, and will really enable us to move the needle on a variety of things towards our strategic plan. If you look at the next slide, we do have some items that we had proposed that at this time we don't see the funding available to do these. That includes starting to move forward on replacing classroom projectors at the high school level so that we could have more ceiling mounted or mounted on whiteboards like the one here to facilitate teaching and learning. This, that program, as well as the other things mentioned, if things evolve during the course of the budget year, and of course, our budget is not a static thing. Things evolve, the different costs and projections change over the course of a budget year. So if and when resources might become available, these are the kinds of things we would plan to invest in. Potential partial replacement of the high school projectors, additional project-based learning materials, additional professional development for social, emotional learning. And we say additional very purposely because we have plans to use existing funds that are carried forward and part of the budget plan to do some of this work. This would allow us to do more if we were able to free up more dollars. Professional development and curriculum materials for inclusive practices such as co-teaching, a transportation consultant relative to new start times. We'll certainly look to see if there's a way through the transportation funding stream. We might be able to fund that as things evolve. Professional development for cultural proficiency, actually, one thing that you'll refer to in the next slide. Another very exciting news is that we did receive the grant from the Department of Public Health that will provide $100,000 per year for the next 10 years for, towards mental and behavioral health that we're targeting at the transition point from elementary to middle school to provide resources at Sherwood Middle School, including an additional counseling position there for a very specific program. And that grant actually will enable some of these professional development pieces as well. So that's another source of funding that we can apply. And then finally, as you know, the recommendations around central office, district-level staffing for the administrative, various administrative functions, you know, suggested several positions. You know, if money became available, we would look at potentially funding an additional position beyond the one that's in the budget already. And so as the disclaimer says at the bottom of the slide, this is not in any particular order. You know, it really, it's more a list of a variety of things that if resources become available, we'll make decisions during the course of the budget cycle to see if we can enhance some of these programs. As I referred to earlier, you know, we have good news on competitive and private grant funds. The ClearGov platform we presented to you earlier in the year, there's a grant the town received, and with the town manager's office, we're working on through a $15,000 state grant of piloting that software. We'll be doing a space and capacity study that was funded through the Beal Project. We also are looking to leverage money from the Colonial Fund around cultural proficiency, looking for a keynote speaker at some point next year that will help us with professional development. I mentioned the Sherwood Adjustment Counselor from the DPH grant, the elementary counselor through the Department of Education Mental Health Grant. Then, as you know, from our meeting last time, the position of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being, which will be funded through our partnership with Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, as will AVAN, that will help us move students outside of school on a much more regular basis to various learning activities. We have the Project Lead the Way grant for $50,000 that will support both biomedical studies as well as some computer science. And then finally, some advanced placement course training that we can utilize our revolving fund from advanced placement for some funding available there. All told, more than a half million dollars in grant and partnership funds that will be able to be invested in good programming for our students. This next slide is a recap of the various staffing additions. In the top table, you see things that are grant-funded. That includes those two different adjustment counselors, one at Sherwood and one at the elementary level, and the Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being. And then in the next table, things that will come out of the general fund appropriation, and those are all positions that I mentioned earlier in the report. This is just a way to display them all in one place so people can see. A total of 14.3 full-time equivalent new positions coming online next year as a result of this opportunity. As we move forward, last evening, the Board of Selectmen did vote to approve the town manager's budget recommendation, which is aligned with this recommendation, so that's good news. Tomorrow evening in this room, the Finance Committee will meet to make its final Tomorrow evening in this room, the Finance Committee will meet to make its final recommendations, including their budget recommendation to Town Meeting, and anticipating a positive vote there. And then on May twentieth will be the first evening of annual Town Meeting, and typically the budget comes up during the first evening. And we'll be prepared to answer questions and ask for the support of Town Meeting for this appropriation. Now, based on what we have in terms of the positive variance, this doesn't exhaust that. We're always making sure that, you know, we're holding back some funding for unanticipated situations. But in terms of the ability to utilize what our funds that became available this year, as well as some outside competitive grant funds and partnerships, and the addition of the appreciated recommendation from Mr. Mizikar, all those things together enable the plan that's in front of you. So it's a good news story to be sitting here saying, we're not looking at cutting anything. We're not robbing Peter to pay Paul to do something mandated by cutting something else that's not mandated. We're able to add some things, I think, in a very thoughtful way. And the fact that the school committee has a very clear plan on what it expects the district to accomplish over the next several years and what those priorities are enabled us, as a budget process, to go through and really identify what we think the best uses are of additional funds. And so certainly would want your support for that this evening. I do want to thank Mr. Collins. He's done an enormous amount of work on this process, of course, going back all the way to the fall. But to thank Mr. Palance and Dr. McGee for serving on the Finance Subcommittee and giving us advice and recommendations, especially as we started the process and now as we've worked through it. I want to thank all of my other administrative colleagues for their input, both the members of the Central Office Leadership Team here, Ms. Malone, Mrs. Clouder, Mrs. Belcito, as well as all the principals who serve on the school leadership team and the district leadership team. I thought it was a very cohesive process this year. I also thought Mr. Collins' suggestion and what we worked through with the school committee and with your agreement to frame the budget in the way we have in terms of a status quo, what it is that exists and we want and need to carry forward, and then what are some strategic investments we can make. The feedback I've received is that people have found that to be very clear and understandable. And although it is a complex topic, the more clear and understandable we can make it, and I know that's something that Dr. McGee and Mr. Palance have certainly been advocating and helping us with through their Subcommittee work, I think we're in a good place and this is a, this is a good news story. So finally, just to recap, the total recommendation is a little bit over sixty-six-point-three million dollars, about a two-point-one-six million dollar increase over the current fiscal year for the appropriation from the town, which represents a three-point-three-seven percent increase. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, hear your comments, and that we would ask for a positive vote to recommend this budget to Town Meeting and essentially approve this budget, that if it is approved by Town Meeting, we can move forward and implement starting July first.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Committee members, we will go to discussion and questions and comments. Mr. Wensky?
Yeah, this is a good news story, as you said. I think every year, every budget cycle presents new challenges. Unfortunately, this is a good news story, like the fact that we're able to change the narrative to focus on status quo, but also investments. The last several years, we've had to focus on tiered cuts, if you will. So I appreciate the support of Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins, front office staff. I mean, we really need their assistance in helping us navigate through the different budget challenges. And they do a great job providing us with guidance and, you know, it changes so frequently and it's so unpredictable that we really appreciate, I know I appreciate the help that you provide, so thank you.
Mrs. Fritz?
Comment the process. I've done it a few times, and I think this process worked really well this year. We're able to look at the status quo, but we also using the priorities as a roadmap. We could back in to the costs, and it shows anybody who's looking at the budget, this is what you need and this is what it will cost. I don't think it leaves room for a lot of questions or do they really need it? I think it was a much better process this year. I'm also very happy that we were able to add those Adjustment Councils at BH and social-emotional stuff. I think it's so necessary in part of education now. It's what we see every day, and children need those extra resources, so I'm really glad that we were able to do those. But yeah, we still have priorities that need to be done, and there's still funding that's needed, but you know, we look at the town funding, the Board of Selectmen talked about it last night. You can't do everything that you need, and you know, we do understand that. But we do have priorities that need to be accomplished, so hopefully we can make some inroads on that. I do have a question on the Educational Mental Health Grant. How many years are we receiving that for?
Initially, it's a one-year grant, and I'm not, I'll just ask Ms. Belcito in terms of the possibility for renewal of the state grants of ninety thousand dollars.
It will depend on the appropriated funding at the state level, but we'll have ten thousand of this fiscal year and ninety the next fiscal year.
So we can possibly reapply as well? Okay, great, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzano?
I have a question related to the vocational high school and the acceptances. Were there more than anticipated or Assabett didn't accept as many as we thought?
That's correct, and we will work on getting some more specific statistics, even some historical statistics for the school committee. Essentially, my understanding is that only fifteen students were actually given acceptance slots, and that's a much lower number than we've experienced in recent years. Although it has gone a bit up and down, and without trying to simplify this a bit, for those who are watching are familiar with it. So Assabett Vocational Technical High School is a regional high school. There's a number of communities that are part of the region. Our neighbors in Westboro, for example, and Northboro and Southboro are part of that region. And as such, the funding mechanism in those towns is that the Vocational Technical High School goes directly to Town Meeting for funding. It's its own school district. But not every community in the Commonwealth, and actually about a hundred and twenty or so, communities are not part of a regional vocational technical district. Shrewsbury is included in that number, and as a result, because state law requires you to provide a technical vocational education to students who want one and are accepted into a program, we tuition students in. And our agreement happens to be with Assabett High School and has been for decades. In terms of the, so we paid a yearly tuition of approximately sixteen thousand dollars for each student to go to that school, and it's about a one-point-seven million dollar line item?
So for next year, yes, you have one-point-six-four-eight.
Okay, we'll round up.
Yeah.
So, close enough. But it's a substantial amount of money, but we think it's money well invested. It's an excellent school, and our students who want that kind of intensive vocational technical training, that's an excellent opportunity for them. The demand has ebbed and flowed over the years. I do recall a number of years ago, going back to, well, two thousand and two or so, when the new high school opened, the number of applications to Assabett dropped off substantially. But over time, especially as the quality of voc-tech programming had increased, it's a huge success story. Massachusetts is pretty much known to have the best voc-tech program in the country, and it's something that families wanted to avail themselves of. So demand increased. Typically, we were getting, having about anywhere from thirty to forty freshmen each year join the Assabett program. And so typically would have, over time, typically year-to-year, a hundred and thirty-five or so students in the program. About three or four years ago, there was a shift in that the existing members of the regional school district for Assabett wanted to ensure more of their member community students were accepted. And so there was a bit of a shift in Assabett's policy about acceptance rates for their member communities versus non-member communities. In that time, we did receive a downturn of the number of students who were accepted from Shrewsbury. However, over the last year or two, that's actually popped back up again, some of that being because there were three communities for a number of years who were sending students on a tuition basis to Assabett, Shrewsbury, Clinton, and West Boylston. West Boylston, a couple of years ago, made a different decision and started tuitioning their voc-tech students to Lemonster's program. And so it opened up some more seats, and that, so it mitigated that to an extent for us. This year, we're not sure quite why. We're doing a little investigation. We do think that we've heard anecdotally that there was higher demand than typical from the member communities, and that may have affected it. There also seemed to be a larger number of students on the waitlist. And one of the things we're trying to get a handle on a bit is how many students might end up coming off the waitlist. So the shift that we're recommending this evening is definitely hedging so that we're not being overly aggressive in shifting money, just in case the numbers moderate a little bit. There's also occasionally students from the high school, just a handful, who might apply to transfer after their freshman year to sophomore year at Assabett. We also, sometimes we don't anticipate it, but we'll have students return from Assabett and decide it's not for them and come back to Shrewsbury High School. So it's a moving target throughout the year. But based on the acceptance rate, we had allocated for thirty-four students, just based on some past averages, and so only fifteen being accepted with a number on the waitlist. We've moved that number down substantially just because that's, thirty-four is not realistic anymore for next year's freshman class. The only other thing that I would add is that, you know, one of the things that I think is particularly positive about our strategic plan is we're trying to provide more opportunities for students at Shrewsbury High School to have hands-on learning experiences, learning experiences outside the four walls of Shrewsbury High School. And, you know, students who might have been thinking that, or anticipating or wanting the kind of education that a technical vocational school could provide, although we can't provide that level of intensity, of course. We are looking to make sure we're expanding our offerings and providing pathways for students who may be more interested in hands-on, technical types of things. The Project Lead the Way curriculum was actually, that program was adopted a number of years ago in response to some of that. And being able to expand that next year through that grant will be a good thing in some of the work we're trying to do to build more career awareness and opportunities and internships. We think that will help as well for students who don't have the opportunity to go to Assabett. So it's of concern. Obviously, we want Shrewsbury residents to have the options that they're looking for because it's something we'll continue to look at, and we are going to be having discussions with Assabett to kind of find out a little bit more about what's happening there.
Thank you.
Dr. McGee?
So I'm just really happy with this presentation and with this budget we're offering. As my colleague said, the process has improved in my nine years on the committee. It's, I can just see it smooth out each year with regard to the analytics that we're getting from the administration, with regard to the discussions and workshops that we have and the work that goes on between the school department and the town manager's office. So all of this is very positive, and I think the community can take comfort in the fact that we not only have a budget that is actually improving the services that we're offering the children in this community, but that every line on it has been well thought out. And we put a price on everything, so it's not just a wish list, but it's something where we can continue to whittle down on the things that we want. I also share Aaron's concern regarding the availability of vocational training. I think some of the ways in which we save money are ways that I don't feel particularly good about. It's just the way things happened. But expanding the availability, learning more about why students are going to the vocational schools, and as was mentioned, trying to find ways that we can offer something in our district would be a wonderful way to move forward. So all of this is just great, and I'm, this is, I've never seen a budget like this before. I just, you know, wanna...
I prefer this kind.
Everyone does.
Likewise.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. So I'll just echo the remarks my colleagues have already made. I am certainly pleased with this budget. I want to extend our thanks on behalf of the committee, certainly to the town manager for his work in certainly identifying the revenues necessary to bring us to this point. And certainly, it is a good news story that we are able to have a conversation. So unlike those conversations we have year after year, and usually the tone and tenor of these discussions are about staving off harm to the program, and here we are able to have a conversation where we prioritize and target investments to create tangible improvements in the student experience, which I think is wonderful. Taking a step back from this year and still putting it into context, I certainly remain concerned. Mrs. Fritz alluded to this earlier, but we have a set of strategic priorities that, five-year goals, that we developed very much in consultation with the community. They're very much a very strong reflection of what the community at large wishes to see from Shrewsbury Public Schools. And in order to reach that point, we're gonna need more investments still. You know, it's great that we're able to have a year where we're making these investments, but it comes on the heels of some years that were less than great. So this is a good news story. I hope we can continue the good news stories going forward. Colleagues, anything further on budget this evening? I would entertain a motion at this time that the school committee votes to recommend a fiscal year 2020 Town Appropriated School Department Budget of sixty-six million, three-hundred-and-two-thousand-and-forty-one dollars for Town Meeting approval.
So move.
Motion has been made and seconded. Colleagues, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much. We appreciate the support and the recommendation. I'd be remiss if I also, I meant to mention, in Mr. Collins' office, Kim Fitzpatrick, who works extensively on the budget materials, is instrumental in making all these things come together, and she's done some excellent work with that, so I want to make sure we thank her publicly as well. But thank you again for your support, and we'll look forward to presenting this to Town Meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Colleagues, moving along to the next item on our agenda, which is actually under New Business. It is the Evaluation of the Superintendent of Schools, one of our most important annual duties. It is the responsibility of the school committee to evaluate the superintendent's performance. Committee members each individually completed our evaluations of the superintendent's performance from January of 2018 to present, based on those individual nominations, which were submitted, of course, to me as the chair. I have compiled the composite evaluation provided to us under separate cover. I will tonight provide a brief summary of that composite evaluation, and then I will, of course, afford committee members the opportunity to make their own comments and, of course, hear feedback from Dr. Sawyer, after which I would ask for a motion and a vote to approve the composite evaluation as presented. So by way of background, certainly for our viewing audience, we use a tool that is mandated by state law to conduct the superintendent's formal evaluation. It is broken out into seven categories. There are three categories: Student Learning Goal, Professional Practice Goal, and Progress Towards District Goals, where the superintendent on an annual basis outlines his goals to the committee. And we have a series of options to evaluate the progress that has been made on these goals, ranging from no progress to, I think it's, what is the top rating of that one? It's achieved or something that indicates that they've been done. And then, of course, there are four standards, including Instructional Leadership, Management and Operations, Family and Community Engagement, as well as Professional Culture. Each of those has a number of subcategories, and in each of those categories, committee members are required to assign the superintendent one of four possibilities. The best being exemplary, also proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory are results for each. So what I am going to go through is just category by category, provide a brief summary. I am actually going to be referencing comments that committee members made in their summative evaluations. So under Student Learning Goal, and the committee noted that there was some progress on this goal, to highlight remarks, Dr. Sawyer is student-centered in his work and his passion for all children to be academically successful. He is passionate about the current work in the district to address the well-being of staff and students. He takes a holistic approach to education and considers the whole child when advocating for funding for our school district so that all children, regardless of learning ability, receive a high-quality education. The next category is the Professional Practice Goal, and actually, I should probably read his goals. By the end of 2018, the superintendent will have worked with the leadership team to build widespread awareness and understanding of the district's vision and strategic priorities so that at least eighty percent of parents and ninety percent of staff agree that they are well-informed regarding the portrait of a graduate and the strategic priorities and goals. The committee determined that there was significant progress on this front. Dr. Sawyer's awareness regarding, excuse me, awareness regarding the district's strategic priorities is widespread. Reference to the strategic priorities has been consistent in district projects and communications at all levels. A committee member remarked, "I believe that Dr. Sawyer has done a good job to ensure that all staff understand the district's vision and strategic priorities." Under Progress Towards District Goals, again, the committee indicated that the superintendent had made significant progress, and to highlight some remarks, steps have been taken on most all goals, with only a few still in the earliest stages, noting that three initiatives, the school start time, homework, and project-based learning inventory are critically important to the strategic priorities, and as their impact on students will be significant, it makes sense not to rush through them for the sake of meeting a deadline. Dr. Sawyer, along with members of the district's leadership team, spent a significant amount of time working with the Beal Building Committee and the MSBA to present a new school building proposal that met the needs of the district and students, as well as the taxpayers. Their detailed work resulted in an overwhelmingly positive public vote to support funding for the new Beal school building project. So some highlights there. Moving into the first standard, a Standard One Instructional Leadership. Of the five categories, Dr. Sawyer received proficient in two of them and exemplary in three. And just some comments, his overall rating in this category is exemplary. While much of the work in subcategories A, B, and C is delegated to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, processes and outcomes under each subcategory are exemplary and are reflected in the district's strong academic standing and overall student success. Dr. Sawyer gives his leadership team opportunities to be reflective, collaborative, innovative, and honest about the successes and challenges that they face on a daily basis. Dr. Sawyer is the quote-unquote encyclopedia of public education. The depth of knowledge he brings to this district are invaluable. And of course, there are a number of compliments for Ms. Clouder's work as well because it is a lot of Ms. Clouder's role that is particularly referenced in Standard One. So again, Standard One, exemplary. Under Standard Two, Management and Operations, the superintendent received proficient in one category here and exemplary in four of them, and received a rating of exemplary overall. Despite, again, some comments, despite daily challenges, staff strain, and demand... Despite, again, some comments, despite daily challenges, staff strain, and demands that can exceed capacity, the schools are managed without significant incident in a way that fosters strong student success and performance. Staff continue to be among the most talented in the region, and the district's financial situation is healthier than it has been in a number of years. The change in formulation of the budget and the manner in which it was provided to the public and other town boards has created a shift from what will be reduced if funding is not provided, to what amount of funding is needed to meet goals and strategic priorities. Dr. Sawyer approached the idea of using interest-based bargaining versus traditional bargaining, which committee members praised. In reference to the report the committee recently received from the UMass Collins Center, a committee member remarked, "I am hopeful that this report will be carefully analyzed in order to determine short, medium, and long-term work that can be done to improve the work environment in central office, and hopefully free up time for current and future work needs." Dr. Sawyer runs a solid, highly transparent organization. He is forward-thinking and always finding ways to do more with less, ensuring his organization works within its allotted budget." And again, a rating of exemplary in that category. Under the third standard, which is family and community engagement, there are four subcategories here, and all of them, the superintendent received a cumulative rating of exemplary and an exemplary rating overall. There was particular praise for the hashtag Shrewsbury Learns Twitter campaign, which has done a great deal to bring awareness of district achievements to the broader community. The superintendent's public-facing communications are strong and continue to get better, with an especially robust social media presence that engages many. His level of engagement with the community is outstanding. He continues to be seen as the face of the district and is well-respected by Shrewsbury citizens. Between the cable TV show, school journal, Twitter, blog, engagement of PTOs, and presence at school events, the superintendent has an excellent relation with, relationship with students, parents, and staff, and a rating of exemplary in that category. In the final standard, professional culture, there are six subcategories. The superintendent received one proficient, one needs improvement, and four, excuse me, three ratings of exemplary. That doesn't add up. Was I wrong about the number of subcategories? Two, four, there are six subcategories, one, two, and three. So three exemplaries, two proficient, and a needs improvement for a proficient rating of overall. Committee members each expressed some concern about the frequency of the superintendent's communications with committee members. There was consistent feeling that this, that is an area that requires further attention and improvement going forward, but overall comments regarding the superintendent's performance under professional culture were especially positive. The superintendent's commitment to the highest standards of academic achievement continues to be reflected in SPS staff at all levels, contributing strongly to a culture that attracts some of the most talented educational professionals to the district. Dr. Sawyer is committed to and fosters high standards of service, teaching and learning throughout the district. He leads by example and expects as much of himself as he does of his staff. SPS culture, SPS has a culture of high achievement for all students, regardless of background and learning ability. Commitment to high standards is well-recognized and appreciated. And with an overall rating of proficient in that category and an overall rating of exemplary in the other three, Dr. Sawyer's overall summative performance rating is exemplary. So with that, I'll turn it over to committee members who'd like to offer further comments. Mr. Wensky, who had to step out and will be returning later this evening, did provide me with some comments to read, but I'm gonna turn to you all first, just to break up the monotony of my voice. Dr. McGee, let's go around the table.
You know, in general, I think this is one more year that we really appreciate the work that Dr. Sawyer does. I think we have an excellent department, and you deserve credit for that. And it represents an organization that is good in so many ways, and I think that the evaluations express that. The comments regarding communication with us this year, I think it stands in contrast to what we're used to, in that you had exceptional communication with each of us as individuals, as well as the group as a whole, and that has fallen off this year, and I look forward to us returning to where we once were.
Thank you. Mrs. Fritz.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, and I've had a lot of bosses in my work world, and you know, you kind of look at what people do that's really good, and some things they need to change, but I think, you know, Dr. Sawyer's always been a consistent leader, and this is a big district with a lot of moving parts and a lot of unfunded mandates and all those things, but we consistently, under your leadership, are able to meet these challenges, but it's not without a lot of stress and, you know, things behind the scenes that people don't know that goes on in a large district. So we appreciate everything you do. We know you have a lot of things people don't even know that you do, and I know, I always appreciate that, and I'm kind of amazed sometimes at all the stuff you have on your plate, and that everybody just expects to be done. It's a lot of work, so thank you very much. I agree with Dale. I think communication is something that's good in any organization, and we'll just keep continuing to get better at it as we move forward, so thank you.
Mrs. Consano.
Yes, I thought this year was a banner year. We have a new elementary school coming on board, and Dr. Sawyer and his team was critical in that success. We've had a significant increase in the amount of grants and sponsorships. Again, part of your team is responsible for that, and some of that's your own initiative. There's been a change in approach to negotiations. Again, I think that's part of your initiative, but it also seems to be more aligned to the collaborative culture that we have here in this district, and while there are always going to be some bumps when we try something new, I'm hopeful that that will be an effective approach in the future. We talked already about the budget and how the reframing of that has been very positive, and I think that's attributed to you and your team. And over the years, your management style, I think, has gone from being more of a manager, and now you're a mentor and a facilitator. And it's always very helpful for me to read the feedback that your leadership team gives to us. It was very positive. It reveals the kind of person that you are, which is one who supports the individual and who is a problem solver, so I think that those are really important to have as our superintendent. And finally, I know, you know, you are responsible for, for the district and all of its outcomes, and I know that responsibility must weigh heavily on you from time to time, and so I encourage you to continue to delegate and to find time to renew and refresh and enjoy the successes of the district and that of your family. And so you certainly deserve it. We are extremely lucky to have you.
Thank you, Mrs. Consano, and I'm gonna read the comments that were submitted to me electronically by Mr. Wensky, again, who had to step out. From Mr. Wensky, our school district had a very productive year as a result of Dr. Sawyer's leadership. From the significant achievements of the new Beal School project to establishing creative new methods of classroom communications via Shrewsbury Learns on Twitter, Dr. Sawyer is always laser-focused on the critical needs of Shrewsbury schools. Dr. Sawyer leads a solid, highly transparent organization, always finding ways to do more with less while achieving maximum results in the classroom. He is well-respected by his direct reports, educators, faculty, staff, and peers. Dr. Sawyer is forward-thinking. Dr. Sawyer's forward-thinking vision and depth of knowledge are an asset to our district, and Shrewsbury is very fortunate to have him as our superintendent of schools. And I'll close with my own comments. Certainly, I think that the district is extremely well-served and has been for some time by Dr. Sawyer's leadership. I do find myself making a comment pretty much every year, which is that what sets Shrewsbury apart from other districts is the quality of the staff that we have. We don't have the much, the most money. We're never gonna have the most money. We never have the nicest things or the most resources. It's the quality of the people that we have working in our organization, and that is a culture that has to come from the top down. That is a culture that is set by example by the superintendent and the work that he does, and the results are evident everywhere. This district, despite challenges left and right, this district succeeds on so many fronts, and we have quite a bit to be proud of, so I continue to be impressed and pleased by Dr. Sawyer's performance. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer, if you have any response.
Thank you. Certainly, I'm humbled by the feedback and appreciative. As always, this is a team organization, and I certainly benefit in my role from the outstanding work that so many do across the whole district to make everything work. I would start by thanking Beth McCollum, who is, as my executive assistant, does outstanding work all day long quietly and makes me look way better than I should most of the time. And as it's Administrative Professionals Day, all of our support staff, the secretaries, and different specialists in central office at all in the schools, the work they do really makes the schools go, and I appreciate that very much. The educators, support staff, students, parents, and certainly my colleagues here on the district leadership team, central office level, who are here this evening, the principals, the district leaders, who are department heads and assistant principals. You all noted it, we have an incredibly high-quality staff who are really dedicated to doing the right thing for students and supportive parent community, and we're very fortunate, I feel very fortunate to be working in this school district and have had the opportunity to do that now for more than two decades, which is hard for me to believe. I do also want to thank Kevin Mizikar, the town manager, who, again, building a really strong working relationship with the school department, all the different department heads that I had the benefit of working with. We have a very good culture in Shrewsbury, departments working together, and that's something that, again, supports the work that ends up translating into the kind of feedback that I received this evening. I do appreciate the validation of all the work that we are doing to move the strategic priorities forward. I certainly concur and understand the issues raised relative to communication with the committee as a whole individually, and those are fair points, and I'm more than confident that we can work together to ensure satisfaction in that area. But overall, again, I'm flattered and humbled by the feedback. I cannot take credit for a lot of it, because it is just an enormously talented and hard-working team who makes this all go, and I'm really happy to be a part of that. So thank you, and I appreciate the ongoing support. And for the committee, of course, and we're going to hear a little bit about how important the school committee is in a moment by celebrating Mrs. Consano, but the roles you play, you know, volunteer roles that take enormous amounts of time and effort and lots of points along the way, important decisions where leadership has to be exhibited, is really very, very important. And so I thank you for your ongoing support and the work that you do and the contributions you make to our community and to our schools. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer, we do need a vote to approve the summative evaluation as presented. I would entertain a motion at this time that the committee vote to approve the superintendent's evaluation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Colleagues, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously.
May I have one more thing?
Yes, you may, Dr. Sawyer.
I noticed that my predecessor, Dr. Anthony Bench, just came into the room. I'm glad he didn't come before the evaluation. I would've thought that perhaps something was going on. Bringing him back. But I'll take it as a signal that things are okay. Welcome.
Speaking of which, the next item on our agenda is under New Business. It is a vote on the superintendent's contract. A vote of the school committee is required to authorize the chair to approve an updated employment agreement with the superintendent of schools. Committee members discussed the superintendent's contract during executive session at our previous meeting, and by law, we must take action on that contract in open session. To wit, I would tonight ask the committee to vote to update the contract for, the contract which will be for five years from July, the superintendent's contract, which will be from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2024, which will include a 2% salary increase to $198,247, with all other terms remaining unchanged. Someone want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Colleagues, is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is under approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes before us. They are the minutes of our workshop of April 3rd, as well as the minutes of our regular meeting from April 10th. Those have been reviewed by Mrs. Fritz, who is the committee secretary. Colleagues, are there any additions, corrections, corrections, questions, deletions? Seeing none, say none? Say none without objection. We will mark those as accepted. Which brings us to the last item on our agenda for this evening, which is indeed a bittersweet one. This is the final school committee meeting for our vice chair and our colleague, Erin Consano. Mrs. Consano has served on this committee continuously for 12 years since May of 2007. During that time, she has served as chairperson twice, played significant roles in the efforts to construct two new schools and pass an operational override. She's played a major role in policy overhauls, been an active liaison with parent groups, and of course, has been an invaluable colleague and friend to the nine people who have had the privilege to serve with her on this committee. While all of us here at the bench will have some parting words for our friend and colleague, we have a number of special guests with us in the audience this evening that I will recognize briefly who each wanted to come and make some comments about Mrs. Consano's service to the committee and to the community. And I would ask those of you to please line up behind the microphone in whatever order you want. I'll start calling on you by name if you don't come on up, because I know who you are. We'll start with Mrs. Consano's former colleagues. If you'll introduce yourselves, come to the microphone or the table, whichever you prefer. You would begin, please, by introducing yourself.
Sure. John Samia, former school committee member, Precinct 7. It's always odd being on this side of the table after being on that side of the table for many years, but did it a few times. Last time, Dale, I think you and I, with the fiscal projections a few years back. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I had the honor of serving on the school committee with Erin for nine years. We started our first full term together back in May 2007, and we learned and grew together as school committee members. I remember talking quite regularly, particularly early on, as we navigated through the first few months on the committee, and tried to figure out how the committee works. During this time in our tenure together, I had the great fortune of getting to know Erin. Erin is a smart, dedicated, and hard-working colleague with an unwavering passion to provide equitable learning opportunities for all students. She is a person of the utmost integrity, who always will choose to do what is right as opposed to what would be politically expedient. You accomplished so much during your 12 years of service in the school committee and have so much to be proud of, including your extraordinary efforts as a member of the community's supporters for Sherwood and related service in the Sherwood Building Committee, which brought us the Sherwood Middle School. For the benefit of generations to come, this project was completed ahead of schedule and under budget. Your service as a member of the policy subcommittee, as Mr. Pallach has talked about, actually, I think you hold the record for the number of years on the policy subcommittee. You have been at the forefront of developing or amending policies that will ensure the long-term vibrancy of our school district, and your unwavering leadership during many years of unprecedented financial and regulatory challenges, which allowed our district to deliver an educational program that our community expects. Thank you for your thoughtfulness, your professionalism, and your friendship. After taking some well-deserved time off, I hope that you will get involved in some other capacity soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samia. Who'd like to go next? Mrs. Remington.
I'm used to standing up here, so I'm Suzanne Remington, and Erin and I got acquainted several years ago through some of the many campaigns and ballot committees that Mr. Samia and Mr. Pallach just talked about, and we actually ended up becoming fast friends and realized that we grew up in towns next to each other and graduated from opposing rival high schools the same year. I just want to talk about two qualities that I see in Erin that I think most likely make, helped her become a really effective school committee member and team player. Erin is an excellent listener. Erin will listen, 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 and she thinks before she speaks. So she chooses her words carefully, and as they used to say about E.F. Hutton, when Erin Consano speaks, people listen. And I'm sure her children really always do that, too, right? I'm sure they follow that. The other thing about Erin is that she's a natural caretaker. She, she's, was a teacher. She's a wife and a mother, a daughter, who has done a lot of caretaking for her loved ones, and also for her school committee members and colleagues. And I know that she thinks of all of you as friends in addition to colleagues and has a great respect for you, so in a way, I'm sure that she's taking care of all of you at different times and listens to you during your time you've worked with her. So she's also been a caretaker for thousands of Shrewsbury schoolchildren. So very indirectly, but in her long tenure on the school committee, all of the kids that have come through here, she's been advocating for them, supporting them, strengthening their education, and recognizing the need for a high-quality and well-rounded education for all of them. So now that she's stepping down, I don't think we've seen the last of Erin Consano. I hope we haven't, because I expect that she will rest yet become involved, as Mr. Samia mentioned. I expect, I expect that from you, actually, Erin, that you will remain involved in the community. And many of you don't know what Erin's latest caretaking venture is. It's beekeeping. So Erin and her husband Dana and I are taking a bee school together, actually, about beekeeping. Erin is getting an A- Erin is getting an A+. I think Dana is probably getting an A, and I'm actually failing. I've missed both of the classes, so I wish she's going to be tutoring me, but. So, now Erin, you have the responsibility of caring for tens of thousands of bees, because we learned that there were between 50,000 and 80,000 bees at the height of the population in the summer in central Massachusetts. So, you need to keep the bees alive, so that, no pressure on you there, that's not too hard. Make sure there's abundant honey and educate them. So, thank you so much for your service and for your friendship.
Thank you, Mrs. Remington. Who's next? Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Pallach. Mark Murray, former school committee member and finance, present finance committee member. You know, John and Suzanne, I think, really hit it on the head when they said all those nice things about you, and I concur, obviously, but I think, when I think of you, Erin, I think of someone who really loves kids, and I think anyone who does this job, who works in the school committee, you have to love kids. And that comes out every day, you know, that you're on the committee and the way, the work that you've done. It's something that has really impressed me over the last eight years that I've watched you and then the four years that I worked with you. I wish you all the best, and I hope you're a better beekeeper than I am. Good luck.
Yes, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Who's next? Ms. Mitsus.
Hi. I'm Lauren Mitsus, and we met way back when I was in the teacher role, and then we worked together on so many projects, and then ended with the friendship role, which I'm so honored to call you. So, I wanted to thank you for 12 years of truly dedicated service, and we, when we look around our town at the many new landmarks, your handprint is upon them, from Sherwood to our beloved library and soon to Beale. But what we all really appreciate most is the way that you did your job. Your thorough research of projects, your questioning, but most impressive, your open-minded spirit and attitude, the way that you came across everything as an active listener, consistently able to view issues from all perspectives, weigh them in objective ways. It's not only what you did, but it's always about how you did it, Erin. And on a final note, Erin Gonzano, you make the best Irish soda bread in the whole town of Shrewsbury. Thank you, Erin.
Anyone further from our audience this evening who'd like to offer some remarks? Dr. Ben. Welcome to our former Shrewsbury superintendent of schools, Dr. Anthony Ben, 1994 to 2009.
So, Erin is my hero for a variety of reasons, one of which, of course, is that she was able to be on the school committee for 12 years. I was on the school committee in Wellesley for three years. And you know, superintendents, I think, certainly with me, we spend a lot of time telling the world how we're drinking from a fire hose and how much work there is associated with the job. And when I became a school committee member in my own town, I realized, wait a minute, wait a minute, we don't show up for a meeting every two weeks, and that's all there is to the show. So, we did all those kinds of things. So, it's really extraordinary that you've been able to dedicate so much of your time and who you are to this town. The other thing is, I'm just so struck by the things that people have said already, particularly that notion of leadership and waiting and listening, which is what you were so good at. I mean, actually, you were on the school committee for a couple of years only, and then most of the time, we interacted when you were off the school committee. But that, that struck me when it was commented on your ability to listen, because that's certainly a hallmark of who you are. I'd also like to say, in addition, as I, you know, make a couple of comments, is that don't take it for granted how special this community is. The fact that Erin served for 12 years says something about Erin. It also says something about the school committee, it also says something about the entire community. I do a lot of work still, and I find myself in lots of different communities, and I reference Shrewsbury all the time, because I tell communities that, you know, we get what we deserve often. And there are school committees that, and communities that turn over superintendents every three or four years on a regular basis, which brings great instability to a school district, it affects the professional staff, and it certainly affects the kids and their achievement. When I did a workshop for MASC in the fall, I referenced Shrewsbury a couple of times, because my understanding is that Shrewsbury has had four superintendents in 50 years. That is an extraordinary achievement. It makes this place very special, because the stability and leadership that we can have because of all of you, and certainly Erin, because of all of you, that has provided the kind of professional culture that you have, the leadership that comes forward that you have, and the high achievement that you have. It really is just plain terrific. And then a little bit more personally, as I, you know, as I think of Erin, because now I've been retired, although I'm flunking that, I think you all know that. It's, I've been out 10 years. I, I think it was Albert Einstein who may have said it, that education is what you have left when you forget everything you've been taught. And what I have left is an essence of Erin, after I forgot all the interactions that we had over those years. And that is exactly what the people said already in terms of the, the deep integrity and honesty that you bring to the job, which is such a role model for school committee members and leaders anywhere. And, you know, just, this world needs a lot of Erin Gonzanos around right now, and I don't end in a, in a happy note, I end up in, you know, a thankful note, a note of gratitude for you as being part of this wonderful, wonderful community, because it truly is, and I have a better sense of that now that I'm away from it. And I agree with previous speakers that there's no doubt that you'll continue to make good contributions to this community and beyond. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ben, and thank you to our community members who've joined us this evening to offer their comments. We did actually, in, in just a moment, I'm going to offer our central office team a chance to offer remarks of their own, but we did actually have another component of our community folks, which I've been asked to do tonight, our legislative delegation, Senator Moore and Representative Kane, both wanted to be here personally. Unfortunately, both the Senate and the House are in session this evening, and they have asked me to present you each, with, from each branch, a citation from Senator Moore and the Massachusetts Senate extending you congratulations for your many years of dedication and exemplary service as a member of the school committee, and it's signed by the Senate President and Senator Moore.
Thank you.
And from Representative Kane and the Massachusetts House of Representatives, in recognition of your many years of dedication, leadership, and exemplary service as a member of the Shrewsbury School Committee. You have served our school community and students with a passion for excellence in education. Your leadership as co-chair of the Sherwood Middle School Ballot Committee was significant to the passage of the ballot question to build the beautiful new school. Our community is grateful for your service, and your mark will be long felt in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, and it's signed by Representative Kane and the Speaker of the House.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Central office staff, Ms. Malone, will go outside and make her way to the center.
Okay. So, Erin, when I think about you, I also think of very thoughtful leadership, that ability to listen and really reflect on a topic. I also think you've always brought many perspectives, including the perspective of someone who was an educator, and the perspective of someone who knows how important it is to teach all students something that's very important in our current strategic plan. But what I really want to talk to you about is punctuation. So, I think a comma should be placed wherever I have to take a break in a really, really, really long run-on sentence.
Oh, no.
Like, I think that's where a comma goes. You think there are other rules for where commas go, and I, I want to thank you for sharing your wisdom about those rules with me and leaving me petrified to write anything in your presence. Thank you very much for all your support. It's been great.
Thank you, Barb. And actually, before we move down the line, I neglected Ms. Belcito in our audience this evening, who will have come up to the microphone or sit at the bench, if you prefer.
So, in thinking about our work together, I know it's only been a short couple of years, but what I've truly appreciated is the immediate notion of support that I felt when I started in Shrewsbury. And one of the ways that this happened was through our connection with the Shrewsbury's Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And I think what I learned very quickly was that your kind, thoughtful, supportive, quiet demeanor was also your way of also listening and, and thinking about what questions should be asked about the best services and programs for our students and how do we get there. Your expectations about having that group come together and meet and to have those important discussions really means a lot to me in my professional work here in Shrewsbury, so I thank you for all of your time, your effort, and I have enjoyed our conversations. I do like our Irish heritage, we have that nice connection. So, I really appreciate your dedicated service and commitment in being a role model for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belcito. Mr. Collins.
Yes, sure. Thank you. Well, Erin, I know we got to work together for a few months back in '07 before I left the district, and I was kind of able to watch from afar all of your work, and especially around the override and the building project. And I think it's certainly one of the things that hasn't been mentioned, but I think is really important, is the fact that, you know, these past 12 years that you've invested so much time and energy beyond these meetings, but at home, you know, talking about and thinking about school matters, and at the same time, you know, raising your own three children who are here tonight, and that's quite a challenge. So, you've done a great job on both fronts, of course, and I too would be remiss if I did not mention those three words, Irish soda bread. It was always a pleasure, honor about St. Patrick's Day, that you would come in with a couple of still-warm rolls, and we would all pretend, yeah, thanks, yeah, we'll put them in the back, and then after you left, certainly after you left, it would just be crumbs. So, I hope you might just consider contending that tradition even though you're not. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Clutter.
I'm feeling a little sorry for myself, frankly, because I've had the least amount of time with you. I know you've had 12.
She's just trying to get closer.
I lost a wheel.
So, Erin, you left.
I'm leaning this way as I'm talking. This is a little distracting. I'm not going to lie to you, but I did, I did prepare something specific to say, and I want to continue with that, because I think your dedication to the district is inspiring to me. So, I think of E.E. Cummings, the poet, who said, "It takes courage to grow up and turn out to be who you really are." And I think one of the things that strikes me and inspires me when I reflect on you and the strengths that you bring to Shrewsbury, is that you have always been who you really are. And from the time we had at lunch, and you talked about the kind of really full notion of what it means to be successful and what that means for students in the district, to your, you're listening. I mean, I think every leader really focuses on how to strike that balance between talking and listening, and when you listen, you listen with your whole heart. And so, I'm reminded of that statistics about so much of communication is totally nonverbal, and you've always been that way for me. So, when I get into talking mode, you remind me to open up and do more listening and more kind of genuine listening about projecting your values in that way. So, I'm sad that we're losing you, but I know that you will contribute in many other ways, and I think the best testimony to who you are is the range of people sitting out there. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clutter. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. In terms of, when I think about what makes a community a great place to live and what makes a school district a great place to teach and learn, it, to me, a big part of the answers to those questions are servant leaders like Erin Gonzano. 12 years of extraordinary service, the school committee, to the community, countless volunteer hours doing this work as a public servant. You know, the longer I've been doing this work, the governance of public education is important at all levels, but it's most important at the local level. That's where it makes the most difference, and I think that when you look at what separates high-quality school districts that really serve children well, it's about strong leadership at the local governance level and the stability that Dr. Ben referenced. But over a course of time where I think you can look back and feel enormously proud of lots of accomplishments that our schools have achieved, and, but during times that weren't always the easiest, especially for school district leaders and school committee members in terms of making very difficult decisions that, that had real impact. And I think that how the district has, has evolved over your 12 years of service is a real credit to you, and of course, your colleagues on the school committee over those years who are here and here this evening. As people have mentioned, I think, you know, your leadership, you're being humble, dedicated, always supportive of our work as administrators, very supportive of educators, being an educator yourself, of course, but ultimately, an advocate about what's best for, for students. That comes through loud and clear, and whether that, and certainly, I have the, I have the benefit of certainly being present for all the different public discussions, but certainly the individual discussions I've had with you over the years, you know, what you see is what you get. There is not a different Erin Gonzano behind the scenes. It is totally authentic leadership and, and support for the work that we do, and always, in the event of a decision had to be made, asking and trying to determine what ultimately is in the best interests of the students we serve. So, you know, we, we talk a lot here about culture and about our core values, and I think for me, and it comes from the top, and you exemplify the core values that we try, we strive to achieve, and when we talk to new staff about them being aspirational, and of course, we're not perfect, and we're always trying to get better at them, but you're about as close as it gets. So, we appreciate that, and it's an amazing example to follow. So, collectively, on behalf of the district, thank you for all you've done. Personally, thank you for all the support you've given me over the years, and not only, and also, little known fact, when you still were teaching in a preschool setting, I had the great fortune of having you teach my daughter, Ally, for a year, and, which was also a great time. And certainly, as Patrick mentioned, of course, having Dana here this evening, who has, you know, supported your work behind the scenes all these years, and it was, it's been certainly wonderful to have Annie and James and Mary come through and graduate from Shrewsbury High School. They all certainly brought honor to our school district, and they're continuing to do great things as they go forward beyond Shrewsbury High School, and it's very special to have them here this evening as well, as well as your former colleagues and friends. So, thank you. And just on behalf of the administrative team, we do have a small token of appreciation for you, and I think Mr. Collins is still hiding it under his desk. We'll pass along this card, and.
Oh, what a lovely.
You hear your green phone. You're welcome.
You can't hide behind it.
You can't, you can't put that in front of you.
So, last but not least, and thank you, Dr. Sawyer, the group against whom Mrs. Gonzano decided the company of stinging bees was preferable. Dr. McGee.
So, I've been preceded by people who are far more eloquent than me, and I'm used to making whatever point I make between contractions, so I'll be brief. Probably the most, the most important thing that a, a parent does is raise children, and I think your number-one achievement is in the back row here, and you did a superb job of that, and not only that, but while you were raising your children, you decided to improve the education for everyone's children in this community, and there's a lot to be proud of there. When I think of you, I think of someone who is generous, I think of someone who is kind, and I see how, when people come before the committee, they're always tense, and you always put them at ease, and you're always so good at that. So, I will always appreciate that, I'll remember that, and I, as I say, you have much to be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Mrs. Fritz.
Okay. One of the first individuals I spoke to when I was considering running for a seat on the school committee was Erin. We knew each other previously from our involvement in other community groups way back to CBS and the first override, and like Erin, I had school-aged children and wanted her perspective, not only on the role, but also how do you balance work and family and the time commitment to the community. And over the 11 years I've served with Erin, I've come to deeply admire her commitment to education or community. Erin's quiet, but she does not hesitate to stand her ground for what she believes in. She's always fair, balanced, and her decision-making, and she wants to make sure everyone is involved and that their opinions are heard and considered. We've shared a lot of, as community, as community, as committee members, but more importantly, as friends. We've watched our children grow up, we've shared the ups and downs of parenthood, and I see you all back there, and, but we've had a lot of laughs, you know, we've really had a good time, and for me, it's not goodbye. Dana, you're still stuck with me, but see you soon.
Yes, I too.
And I'm going to miss sitting next to you at meetings, and some of you don't know, but after every meeting, regardless of what the meeting is or where we are, we always talk to each other in the car, on the phone, every. is or where we are, we always talk to each other in the car, on the phone, every, Dana, that's why. If I'm not incoming, and Bob's like, oh, she's on the phone with Erin again. So, we have this ritual, so I'm really going to miss that. That was always our time. But I'm really, really excited for you as you move on to this next phase, and I'm going to miss you tremendously.
Thank you, me too.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. So, I have thought a lot about what I wanted to say tonight, and I kind of swirl around two topics, and that is the influence that Mrs. Canzano has had on me, but also on the example, I think, that she sets for the community. So, there's this funny little narrative arc to Erin and I. One of the perks or facets or features of being a member of the school committee was that you were in attendance at every Shrewsbury High School graduation exercise, and the first graduation that Mrs. Canzano attended as a member of the school committee was actually mine. And fast forward five years, it's my first time attending as a member, and Mrs. Canzano was up on the stage handing out the diplomas as chairperson. And as chair, and when I was a new member, took the time to help me learn the ropes, was very, very patient with me, and was something of a moderating influence, is a mild way to put it. But certainly helped me to grow into the role and helped me to... They're still laughing, I know it wasn't that funny. Certainly helped me to grow into the role and helped me to be a more productive member of this committee. And flash forward another number of years, and it's your last time, and I'm the one up there as chair handing out the diplomas, and I find that a nice little arc because I feel that Mrs. Canzano has had a tremendous influence on me and has helped me to grow and develop my leadership style, and I don't think that I would be able to contribute as effectively to this group as I would have had I not had your influence over the years. And what I want to say about Mrs. Canzano, who I think is a really great example to the community and to everybody, Mrs. Canzano, to me, is a very, very significant example of courage. Mrs. Canzano does not like attention. The discomfort, as we're all talking about her, is palpable for those of us sitting up here. Mrs. Canzano is not someone who I think ever imagined she would run for public office. She's not attracted to the idea of her name on a sign, or giving a speech, or her picture in the paper. She is not fond of some of the unpleasant conversations or confrontations that are an inherent part of advocacy. She is one of those people who really, really should be involved in public service, but so often chooses not to put their name forward. And Mrs. Canzano sometime about 12 years ago decided that she was going to do something that was very uncomfortable, very much not first nature to her, and probably more than a little scary, and she put her name forward to serve in an elected role, and she did that because it was necessary to preserve and promote the cause of public education in Shrewsbury. And as Eleanor Roosevelt always said, you know, courage is not the absence of fear, it's overcoming it. Different things are different challenges to different people, but, you know, to know Mrs. Canzano is to know that she's really the last person who, you know, might want to put herself out there as somebody seeking support, and she did it, and there are thousands and thousands of kids who have benefited from it, are continuing to benefit from it, and will benefit from it for generations going forward. So, thank you for everything that you do. And before we let you say anything, we have a little...
Oh, boy.
...token of our appreciation that we'd like to present you with, and when I say little, I don't really mean that. She's coming back, I promise. I think.
Door one, door two.
A token of our appreciation.
Not that heavy, but it is breakable.
And it is the proper Shrewsbury Colonial's gold paper that Sandy picked out.
Yes. Would you like me to open this now?
Yes.
Okay.
Can she open it?
You can have the openers open.
Okay. Then, could you pull that up?
Yep.
Oh, look how beautiful. This is lovely. Thank you so much. I love it. Picture of the town common. Thank you. Yes.
We'll put it back.
Okay.
Yes, you can.
Wow, well, let me just say thank you. Oh, my goodness, thank you so much to all these people showing, you're not going to believe me, I can show you, Mark Murray, John Samia, and Tony Bent, you were in my remarks. So, the fact that you all showed up, thank you so much, and the friends, and the children. Sneaky children, they were. Okay, so I'm going to read my remarks because I can't speak off the cuff about this. Written them about four different times, so this is, is what it is. Thank you. It has been a roller coaster of a ride these past 12 years, and I'm thinking of the end of my time here, not as a retirement, but as a graduation. The amount I have learned from this experience has been staggering. I've learned about school budgets, and Chapter 70, and Circuit Breaker, and how to think big picture, and plan for future outcomes for students who are just starting their education. See, I'm going to lose my place. I've learned how to be in a leadership role and run a meeting and address disgruntled citizens, not that I like to do that very much, but, and how to chair a ballot committee for the building of a new middle school. I've learned how to fine-tune a message that I could present to town meeting to advocate for our budget, and how to prioritize needs in a way that protect the classroom as much as possible. I've also learned that listening is a valuable skill in understanding all sides of an issue, and collaboration and compromise are essential in building consensus. I've learned that kindness is not a weakness, but a strength, and that all of us respond better and work harder when we know that the people around us understand our concerns and have our backs. That is the most important lesson I've learned. I believe that it's the people that make the school district successful, the educators, the paraprofessionals, the secretaries, the nurses, the counselors, the custodians, the bus drivers, the assistant principals, and the administrators, central office, the school committee, but especially the students. Even during those very lean years, when our budget was being cut down to the bone, and I would grow discouraged, it was the students who inspired me the most, and all of their successes and failures, and hard work and perseverance, whether it was dressing up as their favorite person from history, or doing hopscotch on rugs to show us how they learned their math, or describing what it took to achieve a state championship. Each time that I would lose heart after a difficult budget meeting, I would remember them and their optimism and their faith in us. I did my best for them during my past 12 years. I think we all did our best, and I hope I served them well. As many, as most of you know, since I came on the committee, my family has been impacted by chronic illness. These diagnoses, the first in 2010, and then two more in 2013, altered the course of my children's lives and that of my own. After teaching preschool for a few years, I had planned to return to teaching English, but the reality is, is that sometimes hard things happen, like chronic illnesses, like a recession, and plans have to change to fit the circumstances. My experience on the school committee helped me to navigate my new circumstances in two key ways. First, it prepared me to be an advocate for my daughters in the healthcare setting. I was kind, polite, but relentless in asking questions and becoming an active participant on a team that would care for my daughters, just as I learned how to become an active participate, participant on this team. And secondly, and not to sound overly dramatic, but this role saved me. Every teacher, every principal, every central office staff, and especially every student who came to present in front of us, or whom I met in the classroom, lifted me up, inspired me, connected me to the good work that's being done in the Shrewsbury Public Schools. I may not have been able to be in the classroom myself, but I could still be part of a team that was focused on preparing students to reach their fullest potential, whatever that was. I can't stress how grateful I am for that. It carried me through some very dark days, knowing that I was still connected to the lives of children. So, I thank the community for allowing me this opportunity, my colleagues at this table and beyond, like Tony Bent, John Samia, Mary Beth Banyos, she's not showing up, is she? And Mark Murray, and for all whom I've worked, whether it's been knocking doors for overrides in new schools, or attending building school committee meetings, or PTO meetings, or traveling to High Tech High, or King Middle School. It has enriched my life and caused me to view the world in a deeper and more vibrant way. Of course, I must thank my family, my parents, who held signs and fed the troops and believed in me unconditionally, my children, Annie, who practiced her driving skills back in the day by dropping off and picking up lawn signs, James, who analyzed voter results by precincts, which was definitely a real-life application of his math skills, and Mary, who in third grade coined the phrase, "Build a bridge and get over it," which I have always taken to heart. All three would drop everything to hold signs, provide feedback on important issues impacting the schools, and would engage in vigorous debates about turf fields, iPads, school safety, that caused me to see issues from all sides. They are my three most valuable and respected advisors, and I could not have done this job without them. And to my husband Dana goes an enormous amount of gratitude because this job comes with sacrifice, and he made it so that I could come here and to the numerous other events that we attend. He listened and encouraged me and attended a lot of those same events, too. He may be the one most relieved that this time has finished. I know we are both looking forward to a quieter Wednesday night schedule. It has been such a great honor for me to serve this town and its children, and since I am graduating and not retiring, I will continue to be committed in supporting this district in any way that I can. Thank you.
That actually brings us to the end of our agenda. We do not need to go into executive session, so I would at this time ask Mrs. Canzano if she has one final motion she'd like to make.
A motion to adjourn? So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you.